All our meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Mayor and Borough Council of the Borough Seaside Park and the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, held on Thursday, August 7th, 2025, advertised to begin at the conclusion of the work session meeting, which has now just ended. Pursued to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Hub of Means Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of meeting for publication in the Asbury Park Press and the Ocean Star on January 3rd, 2025. Notice of the meeting with the governing body also has been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call?
Councilmember Ammefield?
Here.
Councilmember Condos?
Here.
Councilmember Connor?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Here.
Council President Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Thank you.
Let us all now rise for a moment of silence to be filed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is request for approval of the minutes. Those are minutes of July 17th, 2025, a work session, July 17th, 2025, a regular meeting. Is there any comment?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by councilmember Kraft?
I'll second it.
Seconded by council president Wilk. Roll call?
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Ammefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next on the agenda are authorizations. There are three. The first is the Presbyterian Church of Tom's River Baptism, date Sunday, August 17th, 2025, 5:30 to 7:30 at the L Street Beach. Second, Teen Randy Adaptive Surfing, and this had previously been approved by the governing body, but the request is again on the agenda as its approval to amend the time of the event. The event is Wednesday, August 13th, 2025, rain date, Sunday, August 14th, 2025, amended time, 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., location 13th Avenue Beach. The third is Ocean Running Club, Sunday, October 5th, 2025, 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. The Boardwalk Porter Avenue to 14th Avenue Streets at 14th Avenue is the endpoint. Any questions, comments from council?
On the, I think the rain date's the Thursday. I think that's just a typo, Thursday to 14th is next.
Good pickup. It is Thursday.
Yeah.
So, rather than Sunday.
Volume.
So, that is one amendment if there's a motion for approval. Any other questions, comments from council on any of the three? If not, any motion with the one amendment to event number two as to rectifying the typo?
Make the motion to accept all three.
Motion by councilmember Condos. Seconded by councilmember Connor. Roll call?
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ammefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And next, item seven, is the budget amendment, 225-276, amending fiscal year 2025 municipal budget, and that came about as required by the state in the review process. I can turn it over for councilman Kraft for the backup and certainly thank him, his committee, the council, the administrator, and Jamie, our CFO, for the work that's ongoing in this particular area.
Yes, the state mandated that we undo our adopted budget, and what today is doing is presenting a resolution to introduce budget amendment. At the next meeting, there will be where we actually have an adoption and a public hearing of that budget. The increase, there is an increase from the budget that was initially adopted to what is now being introduced for this, and the difference is roughly $628,000. How we addressed it or how it was addressed in the budget, that we increased the anticipated revenues to take in account for this additional expenditures, and however, there will be no tax increase to the municipal budget based on what we're doing here with the budget change. That's all I have, Mayor.
Next one. Thank you, Bill. Any other comments from council? As such, this would entail the next meeting as the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion from council.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by councilmember Kraft.
Seconded.
Seconded by councilmember Rotunda. Roll call?
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ammefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next are payment of claims, 225-277. It's approving payment of deademised claims as set forth on the check registered bill list for the time period July 18th, 2025 to August 7th, 2025. Any questions, comments from council, or if not, a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by council president Wilk.
Seconded.
And seconded by councilmember Condos. Roll call?
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Ammefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next are the resolutions. I'll read in summary fashion. 225-278, authorizing the adjustment of designated water and sewer accounts. 279, authorizing the execution of change order number one to the contract between the Borough Seaside Park and Spatial Data Logic. 280, authorizing the purchase of 10 Scott cylinders for the Seaside Park Volunteer Fire Company number one from NJ State Contract 24 Fleet Dash 61850. 281, appointing seasonal employees for the Department of Beach Control. 282, accepting the resignation of Patrick Delonge from code enforcement. 283, authorizing a shared services agreement with the county motion for the construction of stormwater pump station at Bayview Avenue, 14th Avenue. 284, awarding a contract to New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the lease of the Berna Get Water Tower for antenna attachment and ground space for ancillary support equipment. 285, authorizing the issuance of a request for qualifications and reposals for the provision of an annexation impact study. 286, authorizing Kyle and McManus Associates to provide professional planning services for consideration of the impact of annexing Berkeley Township parcels into the municipality. 287, authorizing T and M Associates to provide bidding and contract administration services and construction observation services for boardwalk reconstruction phase one, Island Avenue, 5th Avenue. 288, authorizing the execution of change order number one to the contract between the Borough Seaside Park and T and M Associates for additional contract administration and inspection services for 13th Avenue softball field drainage improvements. 289, authorizing the release of a performance bond. 290, auction of municipal property no longer needed for public use. Any comments from council on any of the resolutions?
Mayor, I'd like to point out a few, put a point on some dollars on some of these resolutions, just to summarize that. Resolution 283, the stormwater pump station will be receiving $338,000 from the county. That's 50% of the total estimated cost of the pump station of $676,000. Resolution 284, that's for what we'll be getting in from Singular Wireless, which also known as AT&amp;T in this case, and that'll be an addition, additional $78,000 into our coffers. 286, the professional planner, that's a charge of $5,000 for their services. 287, that's where T and M is going to provide administrative services, construction observation services for the boardwalk reconstruction phase one, Island Avenue to 5th, and that cost is $126,500. That represents, by the way, about 3% of this boardwalk phase cost, roughly $4.34 million. And lastly, 288, that's for the softball field drainage improvement. I know there was a lot spent already on it, but this is to replace the irrigation system for a ball field because it's inadequate.
Thank you, Bill. Anything else from council on any resolutions? Hearing none, it's our practice to allow any kind of public comments on resolutions, though it's not required by law, we do allow that. So as such, I would go into the audience if there are any public comments on any of the resolutions, if anyone has them, if they could give their name and address into the record. Yes, Mike?
Mike Spattafino, 59th Avenue. On resolution 283, this resolution is so very significant that I really would like to have had somebody from council notify the public about the importance of this pump station and what has preceded it, which is the piping that has been put on the 14th down to 9th, correct? Is that correct? That's what has been done, correct? And that with that piping, the pump station is going to enable us to be able to shut off the outflows from the sewers from 14th down to 9th. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, to the bad, that's correct.
All right, so I believe that's a very significant thing, and I think that an explanation so that the public knows how significant that can be in the coming years with the pump station being able to get rid of the outflows to prevent the flooding is something that I would have liked to have heard one of you explain it instead of me. But thank you for passing the resolution, it's a good thing.
Yes, any other public comments on resolutions? Yes, Edie?
8548, 11th Avenue. 276, down near the bottom here, it talks about, I'm assuming this is anticipated revenue of $222,000 and change from this grant. Is that what that means?
Two seconds.
Where are you pointing to?
This is the first page, down the NJ DMT grant.
On the budget?
I'm sorry, I didn't want you to talk.
We're about to, that, that's already been ruled on, but if you want to discuss it.
Yeah, my only question, is that what we anticipate getting from that grant, that $222,000?
I believe so.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons the state had required this procedure to happen.
Okay, so my follow-up is, this was a grant from 2023, when does this expire? Or we're going to get it before it expires?
I think this is part of the thing. That's one of the reasons. You know, that's the annual financial statement.
The Bayview, Cisco.
This was the Bayview Avenue.
Yeah.
So, once that project is closed out, and it's very near to being closed out, the contractor has lots of key punch list items, but our engineer has submitted this for closeout, then look at the grant money from NJ DMT.
Okay, I just, you know, when I saw 2023, I thought, oh man, we don't want to lose this.
So, yes, be completed.
And then I just have one more question because I don't know, what is a Scott cylinder?
An air tanker.
An air tank.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the resolutions, Shirley?
Shirley, 700 North Bayview Avenue. 287, about doing the boardwalk. I thought at one point we said we were just going to bite the bullet and just get it all done.
We are. We're, it's broken up into three phases over three years. This is the first phase.
And is Island to 5th like the worst part? Because we were under the impression of starting north, going south.
No.
Did you look, I mean, was the boardwalk looked at and you're replacing the worst section first, going south to north?
Marty.
Or did you just decide, no?
Yeah.
That's where it's at. Okay. On 288, how much is this whole ball field costing us? It seems like, oh, okay, now we're going to throw in a little bit more, a little bit more. And I mean, there was a meeting when, you know, this room was filled and a lot of people were against a lot of that, and we have so many projects around town that are falling apart, and you seem to be, you seem a lot more.
The project that was proposed last year that everybody came to the meeting for was over a billion dollars. I think it cost us $175 this year, and it's all done. This is $3,000 for subsequent inspections. There's a punch list of little stuff that's got to be done, and that's the end of it.
Well, that's the $8,300, that's, that's the total after. And then we're done with it?
Yeah.
Yes, Chris.
Thank you.
Any other comments on resolutions? Hearing none, I would close the public portion, and I entertain a motion from council as a consent agenda for the resolutions.
I'll make it.
Motion by councilmember Kraft.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded by councilmember Ammefield. Roll call?
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Ammefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
That concludes the written agenda. Does anyone else on council at this juncture have submissions? Anything else?
Mayor, just have a short public remarks. The Borough crews out working during the regular maintenance for the summer. There is some work progress along the windows around the coast guard building, the derided trim work, and we have an upcoming meeting this Tuesday at 1:00 p.m., the monthly meeting with the engineers, and also we'll have two representatives from the Bayfront Committee come in at the time to sit down and talk to the engineer on what's going on at the Bayfront. That's, I'll have the best work for the next council meeting after the next public works meeting.
Thank you, Marty. Anything else from?
Mr. Mayor, I have the.
I have the police report for the month of July. Seaside Park Police Department handled 946 calls for service during the month of July. Motor vehicle stops were 176, motor vehicle summons were 79, parking summons 1,166, two DWIs. Traffic accidents, there were 14 motor vehicle accidents reported, four injuries, no hospital transport. One crash involving a bicyclist that resulted in no injuries. One officer involved accident with a department vehicle, no injuries. Investigation was conducted by Seaside Heights. Officer found not at fault summons were issued to the other driver. We had four domestic violence incidents, two arrests, with 37 emergency first aid calls were answered. Arrests, we had five, two DWI, two domestic violence, and one loodness. We did three background firearms investigations, nine employment background investigations. Employee training during the month of July were ICAT ABL training mandated by the Attorney General, lawful time officers, parts of drug recognition expert, recertification patrolman slippers, child molestation investigations, training was Detective Mans. There were two internal affairs investigations during the month of July, and two detective bureau investigations, one for loodness, one for missing persons kidnapping in conjunction with Deoson County Prosecutor's Office. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Anything else from council?
Mr. Mayor, our Labor Day Craft Show, our traditional event every year, held on, is going to be held on Saturday, August 30th, from 10 to 4:00. To be there is a great event. That's what it'll be.
Very good.
Mayor Marcy, something there. Has anybody watched the boardwalk? Our lack of, by the way, those plaques, I'm seeing more and more on these benches, they really looked at well, a lot of people stopped me and said, I like the council for doing this because it's really a nice thing for Seaside Park, if you've seen the plaques on the boardwalk.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything else from council? If not, I'll go into the audience if there are any public comments, if you have them, if you could give your name and address into the record as per the Open Public Meetings Act. Yes, Mike?
Mike Spattafino, 59th Avenue. I just want to announce that we had a butterfly released last weekend for the pollinator event. Mayor Peterson was there to say a few words, and the, there were over 66 to 70 people in attendance, which is pretty good, and we released 120 butterflies at the butterfly park to try to help pollinators to, because we're an island, and so it's important. So, that was one thing. The other thing is, this is going to be my first announcement of stargazing in the park, in Island Beach State Park, which is going to occur on September 13th, 2025, 8 to 10 p.m. The tickets are free, and they can be picked up at Volano Realty. There are flyers that can be posted all over town that'll tell you, everybody knows where Volano Realty is, but there's a phone number on the flyer, and there will be one posted in this building too, that's presented by the Astronomical Society of Tom Rooks River Area. The event was, last event was two years ago, it was well attended, and it was a lot of fun. And so, on September 13th, if it's a nice clear night, you know, do some stargazing, it's very enjoyable, and it's nice camaraderie with your fellow neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Mike. Any other comments, Shirley?
Shirley, 700 North Bayview Avenue. First of all, thank you for the reports. It's very nice to hear. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and I know you'll follow up more next time. I read something about purchasing another fire truck. Is that true? We have talked about purchasing another fire truck? Or did I misread something? Yes, no?
Yes. Next year.
Have we considered doing shared service with the Heights? I think it's, you know, I mean, the Heights usually turns out anyway with us, and maybe we don't really need a new one right now. Have we considered share service? We used to talk about shared service a while ago, and I think it's something you should think about, because they do have a decent fire company that responds also, instead of buying another fire truck. Just something to think about. Beach badges, how are we doing?
We're doing good. We're doing good. We have, we're over $1.5 million at this point, which is pretty good. We did $2,021,000 last year, so we have a chance of getting to that point again. The weather, this year versus last, I'll tell you, the weather this year versus last year was.
With the sewage problem, not only did it chelp us.
There was.
Can't deny that.
Yes, so whoever clogged that up, I can find out. Sorry. Anyway, hopefully the weather will stay good for the rest of the summer, and maybe be able to crack that too, so we're doing good.
Okay, good.
Just a little longer where we were this time.
Yeah, just like 53 under this climate last year.
Same is true for, we had a hot little one.
But the cam down at the bay, how are we coming along with that? Because I know we've spoken, and we were going to help purchase it, but you said they were, no, you do it. Are we moving forward on that? Maybe by fall? See the bay, the sunset, the flooding?
I mean, we haven't, there's a couple moving parts. We want to do Osprey and stuff on the northern part of the Marina, which means we need to move that gazebo that's there, and so, and then find an appropriate place for the camera.
But it's still going to be moved forward?
Yeah, totally.
Okay. And street lot, any update? I haven't seen a for sale sign.
Not going to do anything with it until the, it's proven that the planned wealth at Desert Pond has been proved to be a good spot.
When will they be able to, like, test draw? Are we allowed to do that?
No, we're not allowed.
Can't do a thing?
No.
Okay. The last meeting that I was at, I mentioned the craft show being moved to the Marina lawn, expanding it, giving Tri-Borough a chance to sell hot dogs and hamburgers, raise a little more money. People ask about this all the time, you can have music there, you can have food trucks there, you can have, make it bigger than what it is, and for some reason it keeps getting knocked down, but with Tri-Borough and the state it's at, I mean, I thought somewhere in agreement last time I brought it up, and then was it discussed, is that under your committee?
It's under my committee, and I can tell you.
Was it discussed at a meeting?
I can tell you point blank, the Tri-Borough's been asked a few times, and they decided not to come in the past couple of years, okay? That's their decision, I'm just telling you what it is, fine. The vendors here, somebody who has worked it and has talked to them throughout the years, they like having it here, and I'm not just saying that, they like having it here versus down at the Marina.
Okay.
They do, Shirley, I'm telling you.
Okay, that's all an answer, at least I got an answer.
So, that's that, and then, and then honestly, it'd be very tough, you know, with the farmer's market, that's one of their biggest Fridays too, so it'd be tough.
It's up Saturday, yeah.
Yeah, so we have roughly vendors, we have, I don't have the exact number, but like anywhere from 80 to 90 vendors out here, and the farmer's market's probably up to about 50 now or so vendors.
I mean, it's combined with the farmer's market, but.
Yeah, it's tough with it, yeah.
They can't set up the day before.
They can't, they can't switch it over.
Okay, at least you've given me an answer, which I appreciate.
You got it.
The other thing, when this whole annexation thing is being talked about, we will also, Tri-Borough will lose the money that Berkeley Township gives them, right?
Which is, which is minimal. Which is a cup of coffee, okay?
To Tri-Borough?
No, no, what Berkeley gives Tri-Borough.
That's something. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other public comments? Yes, Alex?
Alex Condos, 47th Avenue. Back in July, there was a water rescue that the police responded to, and I mentioned to, I mentioned it to a couple of council people, that the facts surrounding that were that an off-duty lifeguard employed by the Borough Seaside Park actually saved the girl who couldn't get back in, and my understanding is that he had his keys with him to the storage box, okay, and that he immediately responded, unlocked the box, and got the torpedo, and went out there and saved her, okay, and brought her in. By that time, then the police had arrived. And I just think that it's important that this individual be recognized, okay? He's a young fella, I do not know his name, I don't even know what he looks like, but I know that he was an off-duty lifeguard, so I just thought that maybe if we did do a little research and find out his name and stuff like that, that maybe we could get him here, because I think that it's important that people like that be recognized, especially in their off-duty capacities, that he was, you know, he responded, he saw that there was a problem, he had his keys with him, and he truly saved that girl. He really saved her. She would have been under.
What beach was that on?
You know, I think it was around about F Street, but don't quote me, but I know we can go to the police cad and find, you know, the details.
We can track it down.
Yeah, it just kind of popped into my mind, and I just think that that's important, especially, you know, younger people that they respond that way, and that's important for public safety, because it's all about public safety, that's why we have lifeguards.
Yeah. Alex, thanks for bringing it up. Thank you, sir. Yes. Yes.
Any other public comments, Chuck?
Chuck Appleby, two fifteen, Tenth Avenue. Couple things, with regard to the marina, the, I went down there, this is, I've been there a few years, and first time I heard that I could get a pass to take my trailer down and pull my boat out on Fourteenth, if I have this little pass, which I got from John. He has him on his desk there, which is really nice. But I thought it would be more efficient if people would, we already have stickers on our trailers for storing them down there. And if the person down at the Beach Control at the Fourteenth Ave just would see that there's a sticker on there that we paid, it's every year we get a sticker on there, that those people can use that, I think that would be a good thing. And it'd be simpler. We don't have to worry about getting a piece of paper. But more importantly, my emphasis has always been with the storage down there, that we get people's trailers out of their driveways in town. Maximize as many people freeing up their driveways with parking spaces on the property as much as possible. And that's one thing we have in town that we could do. We prioritize residents of Seaside Park getting their trailers out of their yards and down there. And we have the stickers on there already. For years, I went after hours and I had the ability to do that, so I never paid anybody.
So no one to pay.
I paid for my trailer, because I wanted it out of my driveway, it's free on the pitch. But, you know, I think everybody in town, that would be a nice little...
Pitcher campus is a fee.
What was that?
How much is a fee to store a trailer at the...
I think it's one fifty.
We don't have any storage available at this point.
Right. Well, every year, it's first come, first served. So it would be the person that we wanted. So the Seaside Park people, and I think they should get preference myself, because I want the cars, the trailers, out of the Seaside Park driveways more than somebody in Pennsylvania.
It's sticky because of green acres.
Yeah, well, you know, first come, first served.
First come, first served.
The other thing is the turfs down there, where we have all these parade events down there. I was on a, we used to manage a lot of parade fields for military and stuff. There's certain things you do to aerate, and do everything for the grass and everything, when you do that. So I don't know if we had a turf specialist. Usually, you could go to a golf course. Those type people, they're trained in and everything. So based on the utilization of it and everything, there's certain things to do. So I know it's failing in spots, moving the vendors around to different spots, when they have their stands there, when their cars, and just to try to manage the grass so it's as good as it can be, basically. It's just something I observe. The other thing is, you know, it's not my fault, but my sister smokes still, which I think really badly. But she sits on her porch all the time, and what she observes is Tenth and Barnegat Avenue, the intersection, people rolling through what creates... Last year, we had an accident with a police vehicle going through the stop sign, and there was a bad accident. But it's just a bad situation, so. When I see that there's a bad situation like that, there's a stepwise progression to what you can do. So I think maybe a white line painted, you know, just at the end. There's different things you could do. So traffic specialists looking at these things. The old map, we used to have all the accidents put on a map every year. It was all by hand, and you could see where they all occur. And I think it was on, up in the north end of town, on the boulevard, in Barragut, maybe, was like the number one spot. It was like this really bad spot. But we should be looking at those things and trying to put things in. I don't know if it's a stop sign with the red flashing lights or a white line across. I'm no specialist in that, but we should do something, because there's just too many people, and enforcement. But if somebody had the little yellow Seaside Park sticker on their car, don't do them, just do...
Show points for a trailer sticker.
I think there's a lot of people doing the, I think they call them California roll, or something. They just roll through, and it's dangerous. And we had a fatality of a young, of an older guy, our neighbor, die on the Townwide Garage Sale Day last year, dead by a bite or something. So, you know, safety is very important. So just, we see these cars flying around in all these SUV, what are those?
Low-speed vehicles.
Stop cars, you know, those. Kids, I've seen beers and stuff holders on those and stuff like that. No seatbelts, kids facing the back, no seatbelts, so I think enforcement's a piece of that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Any other public comments? Hearing none.
Mr. Mayor, before we close, annually, I'd like to thank Shirley Cressel and all the people. Anne Hayes, Cindy Hyden, Brian Gierman, Karen Klingerman, Edie Klink, Nancy Curry, Patricia Mowgli, Billy Moore, Linda Terry, and all the others who support the calendar every year. I bought my two. This year is a special attraction, I do have to tell you, we have Shirley Cressel, who was on the back of the calendar. And Shirley was able to go into her archives and find an old photo of her and a friend of hers when she used to go to the beach, and she's on the front. So there you go. So everyone, please tell, tell all your friends, please, support, support the committee, support the calendar, and let's buy some calendars.
I knew that looked familiar.
I got a colon.
Thank you. With that closing note, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that my...
Motion by Councilmember Ammerville.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rotunda, roll call.
Councilmember Ammerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Kraft, yes.
Councilmember President Wilt?
Yes.
And thank everyone for coming out to the meeting tonight.